Where's the Chancellor though?
Hey, hey Brenda.
Chancellor is here.
Okay, good.
I'm here.
Hello everyone and welcome to this special called meeting. This is an open session meeting and I'll ask Madam Clerk if we have any speakers on the item.
Yes, Madam President, we do. Chris Widenbach.
But before we do that, can I just take a quick roll call?
Of course.
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Yeah.
Thank you. Trustee Brown? She's not present. Trustee Handy? I'll go, I'll come back to Trustee Handy. Trustee Gonzalez, do you want?
Here.
Okay. Thank you. Trustee Weinstein? Trustee Weinstein?
Here.
Thank you. Trustee Napolea Bella Reese?
Yes, here.
Trustee Bonilla?
Here.
Thank you. And Trustee Handy, I'm just taking roll call.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, great. We've got roll call and I will go ahead and ask if we have any speakers on this item for open session.
Yes, we do. We have one speaker, Chris Widenbach.
Good afternoon. I wanted to just clarify, is the agenda item, it seems like the one agenda item, is that the only topic of that I could speak on during the public comment?
That's, that's correct.
Well, that was unclear to me and I did not prepare to speak on this item. And I don't have near enough information to say anything meaningful to you all about this. So I guess I just got to be a spectator today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Vice President, are there any other speakers on the item?
No, there are no other speakers.
Okay, we will go ahead and turn this item 2.1, Consider Approval of Oracle Cloud Services Agreement in the amount of $6.3 million, $6,339,602.95. Chancellor?
Yes, thank you very much. Here we go. Thank you very much. The first thing, Brenda, if I can ask you to allow me to share my screen, I can get to the item. Okay?
Okay, you should be set.
All right, thank you. All right, thank you, Trustee Bonilla and members of the board. I appreciate having the opportunity to talk to you about this item. The item is the proposal of the Oracle contract that was on the recent board agenda item. After the recent board agenda, I sent the board a communication explaining here's the impact of not adopting the contract and wanted you to just have that information so that you could take that information into consideration as you figure out, you know, what you want to do with it. I posed also the possibility of that we had been asked about a special closed session, but, I mean, a special board meeting, though I, you know, had not anticipated that the board would be open to that and to my surprise, Trustee Bonilla said that certainly would be open and to pull the board for availability and we did. So now we have you here and I want to share a little bit of information that I think may answer some of the questions that you had. My goal here is to give you the information, have you understand the impact and there's, there's, you know, about four buckets of impact that I identified. One is the ability that without us modernizing the system and move, migrate into a cloud platform, the ability for us to say that we have addressed things ranging from the Fitback Report to CBT recommendations, the audit findings that we have and the items cited in the ACCJC letters that place all four colleges on probation, that ability is removed. Our response would have to be at this point that we have not made progress on that. As well, the second area is that the costs increase exponentially with that and I do have a slide where we'll talk about that a little bit and I think get to some of your concerns that you have about the cost and especially in light of the May revise and in light of what's going on, you raised questions about the cost as well as whether we should make a five-year engagement around that. So I have some information that I think might be helpful to you. And I also tried to address the issue of the time and then the issue of just plain inefficiency and being able to carry out the functions of the district, but I also have another component that I want to emphasize, which has always been there, but it is about the student's experience. So if I could just go to the next slide, I want to start with just the things that I've talked about in terms of what we get from this contract. So one of the things I do want you to understand is that there's been a long conversation in the Peralta District about the needs of the technology needs. And when we went through this process in trying to negotiate this contract, we took this through the governance process and have gotten from the Technology Committee, the faculty representatives, administrative representatives, if classified representatives, all have indicated the need for this as well as the Technology Committee actually recommending it, voting and recommending it. So it went through our governance processes clearly and, and I'll get to the section about the planning, but also has been a part of the planning processes. But here's what I'd like to highlight, you commonly hear us talk about, well, it will impact our ability to do our monthly reconciliations, it will impact our ability to do the human resources items that we are currently doing using Excel spreadsheets and trying to keep up with human resources benefits and, you know, different aspects of payrolls and the many, the many hours and quite frankly, months that it can take in order to do something that using the technology would be automated and easily you would be able to do something like apply the color raise that you, that we just, cost of living adjustment that we just did in the recently negotiated process, but it's taken months because our technology system does not have the capacity, does not, is not modernized to be able to do that. But here's the piece that I don't know that the board has an awareness of and that is the impact that it will have on the student experience. Now, I know that you know that this district has gone through some work in trying to get this upgrade done before. And actually, we've learned from that work and built in safeguards from the things that made that work fail in the past. And so that's one of the things that I'm really pleased about, but one of the things that happened is that we learned the students' response because they actually did get to the testing in, on the student experience in which, what's called the campus solutions. And in that testing, what we learned is that students were really excited about it, they, they liked it because when we do this, it impacts the student's ability to do so many different things. So it creates, you know, kind of the single sign-on where students are able to register for courses, they're able to do their enrollments, they're able to see their schedules, they're able to manage their student records, see their financial aid, pay their fees, get their EZ Pass, if we were going to still do EZ Passes, they're able to do so many different things. But what happens now is the student, what normally would take a few clicks for a student to go through that kind of experience, the student goes through these very convoluted processes to where what we know anecdotally is that students just simply give up and go to another, another institution. And as a matter of fact, I do know of one student who is the child of one of our executive level staff who tried to register in our process, tried to use our technology to get registered and ultimately just gave up and went to Chez Baux. So that is not, that's not a foreign story to us, we know that that happens, but students would be able to have so much more of a different experience. Now, here's why that's important to you and to me. It is important because it is at a time when we're saying, we have a downward trend in enrollment and we have a situation where the programs and services right now are not functioning at full capacity, don't function with the full level of productivity that we should, we don't, our enrollment has steadily been going down across the district and we want to make sure that we have things in place that make it such that a student is, makes it easy for a student to get in, to get through and to graduate from our programs and services. So, so I just wanted to highlight that because we talk so much about, well, it keeps us from having to keep up with the benefits on paper and pencil, but the reality is that probably the most significant aspect of this is that it changes the students' experience with Peralta Community College District and to the positive. And our students have some expectations around, you know, basic abilities in terms of, of technology. And, and particularly if you're able to use that technology and have everything they'd need using their phone to be able to do that. And then I don't want to miss the importance of what it can do in terms of, we, we don't have a disaster recovery plan and we, we are, we could be vulnerable. And so what it could do in terms of us increasing our security in terms of our technology infrastructure is, is significant. I also know that you asked about, wait a minute, how are we spending so much money on this? I wanted to make sure you understand or that we've communicated clearly that this project is in two phases, phase one and phase two, and by the end of phase two, that, that really is a year long. Phase one is migrating to the cloud, phase two is implementing those modules we talked about. That's about a year and that is something that will be paid for with bond funds. And then in the remaining two to five years, that's where we pay the ongoing operating costs in, you know, I hope that I'm not mislabeling this, but I, I call it for lack of a better word, the license and the ability to use this system. Right now, we have budgeted and we pay up to $900,000 a year to do that, all right? If we do nothing, we will continue to pay the $900,000 a year. However, when we look at the contract, we actually do a couple of things and that will take me to this next slide, which is, we actually are able to use the bond funds to take care of phase one and phase two and a year from now, people are gonna be happier because they have an updated system that has capacities and experiences that, that the community deserves to have access to. And then in the subsequent years, you can see, we pay, the first year we pay the $1.18 million, the years two through five, we are paying $300,000. Now, why is that, or thereabout, why is that important? Because in, right now, if we don't do this, in years two through five, we will pay up to $900,000, over $900,000 each year, right? Years two through five. So this actually takes the cost down and instead of spending money, we actually will have a savings of money and that savings is going to be critical because we're at a time now where the budget, the, the budget scenarios are, are showing that we're going to have to make reductions and so this is a significant impact in terms of savings. So this is not the, you know, you, you go and buy something so you can save money. This is money we are already spending regularly and we will have to continue to spend. The other thing I want to really point out is, what's not, what's hidden in this is it saves us so much more. So I will share for an example, we don't have the capacity, right now we have to add a module or add a technology in order to get the updates on the financial aid. And we pay over $100,000 a year for that. When this system is upgraded and modernized, that separate cost goes away and we get that function. We pay that for the, you know, the issuing of the W2s and that kind of stuff, that's another $100,000. When that system goes away, then when, when, when this, if this contract is implemented, that's another $100,000 a year that we don't have to pay. When we had the security fallout, the security breach recently, you know, Oracle brought its team in, helped us get that resolved, we worked overnight, we had people working throughout, you know, shifts working around the clock in order to get that resolved in a very short period of time. Now, when this modernized, it'll be even a shorter period of time, but if it's not modernized, we pay probably 40, a little over $40,000 for that kind of a service, which the, with the negotiation of this contract wiped that away as something that we would have to pay. So I can just name separate bill after separate bill after separate bill that we will have to continue to pay because we will have those functions, we will issue W2s, we will have students get federal financial aid, et cetera, that we pay in the six figures that with this contract, it makes all of that go away. The other thing I want to say is, the reason we were able to do that is because we're locking in 2018, 19 prices. That's significant because the prices typically go up over 7% or more each year and that's a compounded increase. So it goes up 7% and then the following year is 7% of that new number and then following year could be 7% of that new number. So it could be compounded. So, so what this did, which, which I would have to say is really great negotiations on the part of the district staff, is it locked in 2018, 19 prices for those savings. So once those prices go away, let's say we're not comfortable with this right now, you don't want to make this decision right now, fine, you cannot make this decision, but guarantee that you're talking about an additional $600,000 out of the door just because we wait until after May 31st to make that decision. So that's one of the things that I wanted to, wanted to stress as well. The other thing is that, I think Trustee Bonilla brought up a very good point and, and I regret not being more savvy in terms of being able to get the, communicate the answer out there and her point is, oh, wait a minute, we have a board policy that says, you know, we have an integrated planning process and how does this match up against the board policy? So I went and took, took a look at that and, you know, one of the things that I want to say is, she, she's absolutely right. And, and so I did a little research to say, first of all, our policy is called a Planning Budget Integration, Integration Model, the PBIM. And that Planning Budget Integration Model in the very first page says that this is based on Board Policy 3250. And in that Plan and Budget Integration Model, it, it includes the District Technology Committee. Now, you recall that I raised that, I said that earlier because the District Technology Committee is the committee that's making, that made this recommendation to me as well. So it's a comprehensive, broad-based systematic system, a set of planning processes. Then I said, okay, well then what about the technology plans? And did some research, you actually, PCCD had a technology plan, 2012 to 2017 technology plan, and it said migrate to the cloud and it said modernize your, your people solve and upgrade to nine point, at that time, nine point one, then nine point two. In 2016, your technology information plan said the same thing. In 2017, then you had a, an assessment done that your vice chancellor presented to you and lo and behold, it said the same thing and that, that was a comprehensive assessment. Then in 2017 and 18, you had an Educational Facilities Technology Master Plan that had some basic parts about the technology plan that was reinforced in the overall technology assessment. And then in 2019, you had CBT come in and though they did not do, create a technology master plan, they did do a focused assessment of information technology and lo and behold, guess what they said? Modernize your technology and migrate to a cloud. You have some third-party recommendations. The California Community College Technology Committee put out a thing in 2017 that says, hey, everybody, you need to migrate to a cloud. Peralta hasn't done it, many districts have, but Peralta hasn't done that. And then you had CBT come in, you had Fitback come in and you had letters from ACCJC that came in, in 2019 and then 2020 and they gave several recommendations that said, that called for, in order for us to meet those recommendations, we'll call for the modernization of the technology and updating of the technology. I also want to point to the fact that it is also part of, it has a bearing on other plans and initiatives in the district. The Enrollment Management Plan that was required in order to address the CBT recommendations as well as get the colleges off of probation, all require certain aspects that require, that have certain initiatives and components that require the modernization of the technology and that this would address those issues. The Student Equity and Success Plan as well, the Guided Pathways Initiatives, the Oakland Promise Dual Enrollment and even how we maximize our, the ways in which the student success funding formula will affect us. So I say all of this to, to let you know, first of all, my apologies if we're not putting this out there when you asked on the previous board meeting, but it is very integrated, not only in the plans, but it's very integrated in the initial but it's very integrated in the initiatives that go forward. And it also positions us to be able to responsive, responsibly and affirmatively and positively say that we have taken all of these things into consideration. We have looked at those recommendations. And we've made it such that we have responded to those recommendations that were put forth in our, what I call the third-party recommendations. And, and with that, I hope that it just gives you a little bit of clarity in terms of the questions that you asked before. Understand that the question that we are putting before you is we are seeking approval of this contract. And this may, this small amount of information may not put you in the position or satisfy you in terms of getting all of the questions asked and answered. But we wanted you to have this additional information of the impact of your decision, one way or the other, after May 31st. And I do have staff that are available in the room that if you post questions, then all of us may be available to answer those.
Thank you, Chancellor. I will go ahead and entertain questions from the trustees. And I have trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. I found some of the documents really helpful. And I've got two starting questions. One is, in terms of the cost savings that are built into this contract, as compared to what we might do if we said, all right, let's do the implementations of the modules that, that really are necessary, you know, per the various reports that we've gotten, at what point do we break even? So I think one of the questions that, that, you know, one of the points that's been made is that this is a five-year contract versus a two-year contract, et cetera. So that's one question. And then the second question or concern that I would raise is we've seen a lot of documents that have said, yes, we need this, yes, we need this. We've seen over the years, documents that kind of paint a big picture. But I don't think I've seen documents that I've really, at least that have stayed in my head, where we've said, all right, over the next five years, here's where our technology spending is going to be. And here's how it relates to the rest of the spending within the district. So that we can make recommend, we can get recommendations. You need X, Y, and Z. And we could look and go, well, let's do these particular modules or this particular aspect. This is gonna cost you 2 million. This is gonna cost you 1.5 million. What I think that we haven't seen is that bigger picture of spending so that we could say, all right, as policymakers, we're going to make the choice to go with Plan A or Plan C or Plan B, knowing that we have a limited amount of dollars. And I raise this because I think what many of us have seen and what I've seen over many, many years is, here, do this, and then we'll be done. And then literally six months or a year later, we get back, the administration comes back and says, oh, well, just kidding. We told you we could do it for that amount. But really, we didn't tell you about these six other things. Well, what, you didn't understand that? And we're left kind of slack-jawed. No, we didn't understand that. And it's in part because the master planning has really not been master planning. It's been piecemeal planning. So I've got those two questions. One is, again, where do we break even? We say, look, we're saving money by doing this over a five-year period. Chancellor, you've made that argument. I think if that argument makes sense, sure, it's a compelling argument. But can you lay that out a little bit better? And then secondly, where's the documents that lay out the full spending requirements so that as a board and as an administration, we can put that spending and make wise choices, knowing that we have a limited amount of money and not all the money in the world? Thank you.
Yes, a couple of things. So first of all, you, you, you don't break even. You, you either do a contract that cuts your costs, that you are paying right now, or you don't and you continue to pay those costs. So you either save that money or you pay that money, either way. So you don't break even. The, the second thing is that I beg to differ about the planning because I think what Peralta has done is a tremendous amount of planning. What it doesn't do, which is what the point you're at right now, is it then doesn't execute. I don't know how many plans I've, I've named out plans from 2012 on to today, which is the last seven years, they have identified what needs to be done explicitly. I mean, some of, some of the plans and the assessments say things like, even right now, that there's so much, you're at so much of a risk and there's so much modernization that needs to be done that there are literally buckets in the room when it rains because it leaks and the system is in danger. So, so I think Peralta has done the planning. I think that then it doesn't take the next step. And we may be at this crossword road again. And in terms of, you know, how much money we're gonna spend on technology? So then we know, then you know how you're gonna spend it each year. But basically, through the planning process, we, we focus on what are the needs to meet the mission of the, of the institutions? What do we need in order to serve students? How do we meet our overall goals, strategic goals? And what technology do we need? And then we do exactly what we did here, which is negotiate some of the best costs that are possible for us to be able to do these types of things. There's not a question as to whether we're gonna have technology to make sure students get federal financial aid. The question is whether we're gonna modernize this in order to get it at a certain cost, or whether we're gonna continue to pay that extra cost to get it. Right? So our, our issues are, our focus is, what do we need in order to be able to serve the students? What's the technological infrastructure you need in order to get there?
Maybe I can clarify because I think maybe you've misunderstood me, Chancellor. So let me try to restate in a way that, that makes my, my thinking more clear. And maybe I just have not been clear enough. Okay, in terms of the contract, my question about break even was, a meeting on Tuesday, I think there was universal agreement. Yes, we need to do these things. But we're uncomfortable with a five-year contract. What if we did a two-year contract? What if we did a three-year contract? And so that when we talk about break even, Chancellor, what you said is we can either do this or we don't. And if we don't do this, we're gonna keep paying. And I think the alternative that a number of trustees were suggesting that we consider and be presented with is, what if we did a two-year contract that was more limited? What if we, and, and so you're saying, no, look, if we bundle this all together, we make savings. And so the question around break even was, at what point do we break even by, instead of doing it piecemeal, doing it as, as a lump sum? That's the first thing. And then my second point was, not that we don't have visionary, big plans. We need to do X, Y, and Z. Maybe what I should have said is that our planning does not include budgeting. And so sometimes I'll just give an example with con, with consultants. It, it seems as though we come up with these budgets. We say, well, here's the cost that we're gonna do for part-time instruction or full-time instruction or whatever it is. And then when it comes to a consultant, it's like, yeah, we're just gonna add that on. And it's like, where did it fit into the budget? I don't know, we're just gonna do it. And so the question in regard to technology planning is, what are the dollar amounts that attach to the plans that we have? And in fact, can we afford the plans that we have? Or how do we afford the plans that we have within the budget constraints, given all of the other things that we're trying to get done?
Right, we, well, the dollar amounts for us doing this upgrade, and, and you're right, they do change over the years because the board hasn't acted, you know, on those particular things over the years. So you're right, those dollar amounts are gonna change. My, my statement is you, that, that we can't afford not to do it. When you ask about the question of the five years, the, the reason we're able, okay, so in years two through five, we have to pay operational costs. They can't be paid out of the bond, they're paid out of the general fund. Right now, those operational costs are $900,000 plus, plus whatever module we need them to do, plus whatever little special thing that comes up or change that comes out in the law, et cetera. So that's per year, all right? What, what the negotiated contract is, if you lock this in, then we will lock in these prices for you, the 18, 19 prices. And we, it will take you down to have a, a, a 30 to 40%, a 40% total cost of ownership decrease in cost.
So what I'm seeing then is that in year two, you begin to realize savings. Year one, your operational costs are a little higher instead of 900, to 1.1.
That's correct.
1.2. But in year two, they dropped to 300,000. And so immediately in year two, your combined year one, two expenses are 1.5 as opposed to 1.8. And so in that second year, you're already realizing a $300,000 savings.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's, yeah, and that's, that's also not even counting all the extra things that we pay for, that we won't have to pay for.
Yeah, okay. No, that, that, that arithmetic makes sense to me. Thank you very much. But I also want to make a correction of something that you said. It's, this board has literally, in my experience, never turned the administration down when the administration has come and said, we need the following technology spending. Literally.
Okay, well, then don't start now.
No, but here's the deal. We've been burned so many times and been promised the moon and the stars. And then we get a little piece of meteor rock.
Well, I, I do.
So please do not mischaracterize what this board has done in the past regarding technology spending. This board, literally, in my experience, has never turned the administration down. And now we've just been burned so many times, we're being more cautious and wanting better explanation. So thank you.
Thank you, trustee. I have trustee Handy. Go ahead, trustee Handy.
Anymore. I still have this, this shared screen. So this, these, these are, these are my thoughts on this. I, I'm glad that we are getting more information because that's what we need, what the breakdown is. I remember when Jelena pulled the information about, you were saying 300,000, 350,000 every year. There is that licensing piece that comes in, but you were saying at 900,000. So what I'm hearing now that, looking at this, our break-even point, we would have a cost savings of over a million dollars. So our break-even point would come somewhere after three and a half years. I mean, our, our savings would come somewhere after three and a half years. I think that's helpful information to have. I don't think anyone on this board does not think that we don't need this yesterday. We have been backwater, backward, whatever you want to call it, forever. And this will make a huge difference. I'm hearing some references to the cloud. I would like to think that in this process, this is the beginning of moving us to the cloud. But I think we also need to look even more so to moving extensively to the cloud, not owning this equipment that we have over there, that whole facility, where we have servers and all those things. We don't need to own that anymore. That's an old way of doing things. And we actually can keep all of our employees, manage it, but also move that equipment out again remotely to the cloud. And we could utilize that space for cybersecurity, for internships, for more involvement. But that is real estate where we would have a cost savings if we get out of where we are, which is, is so backwards, it's not even, we all know this, we just never had the money. It's the same with DGS. It's not that they wanted to have all of that deferred maintenance, they had no budget. I get that part. I think what the board needed, and I've been thinking a lot about the four abstentions, is they needed the assurances that Oracle is held so tightly that the district cannot be screwed. Now, when we're talking, what, what I see in phase one and phase two, and I think regardless, I, I was looking at is phase one and phase two are absolutely necessary. And those will be completed in a year. That gets everything more moved up to a more modernized and the upgrades. The second part is a maintenance. But if that, if the total cost breakdown comes down to a cost savings in that last year and a half, okay, that makes more sense. And if the money can come from the bond as an infrastructure, and I don't know why, initially, it didn't occur to me, but that's even better. But when we first got PeopleSoft, it was great. But then we had Andy DiGeralamo come to us and tell us that we had only purchased the vanilla version. Nikki, you may remember that, Withrow. And they carry that lie on for a while. And then come to find out with our next CIO, we had purchased everything. We had just never had them implemented. And so I think that the way that we prevent this stuff happen is a full disclosure. And that's not for me to look at. I just need assurances that you and finance have a full disclosure timelines. This is what's so important on keeping consultants in rain. They will give you their best and brightest upfront. And then as soon as the focus is off, then they start bringing in lesser, lesser qualified people working in your contract. What's important for us is to have the timelines. This is what we're getting. What is the due date? So that we can monitor those deliverables and that in one year or even shorter, we are getting what we need. It's not a question at all, in my mind, that this needed to have happened five years ago. It wasn't a question in my mind years ago that we needed to possibly drop PeopleSoft, except we had made a commitment of our taxpayers' dollars into it. So it's like you've got a lemon car, but you keep putting money into it because you don't want to go back and start over. I don't have a problem with this part. I think that what the board was asking for, and again, I've been thinking about this a lot, assurances. And I also think that if all of those things could happen to us before, the one thing that just, that just doesn't sit well with me is not having a technical architect, a CTO, who is our liaison between Oracle and, and the district. We were already looking at not having vice chancellor's positions there, and I'm okay with that. We, we, you know, we had talked about that. They said we had too many vice chancellors. This is a totally technical piece. So if we have our own liaison between Oracle protecting the district's interests, if they are going to meet those guidelines and we have out clauses in case any of those things don't happen. Folks, we're talking about one year of implementation. And I think the next four years are monitoring and upgrades. And we've been told that there's not gonna be any more cost. For my own personal purse, I would not be doing five years out. But when I hear that cost savings presented to me in a way where I could see that that will start to kick in at three and a half years, then I feel better about that. Nikki, in terms of what they're doing, and I saw Chris had comments in terms of feedback and all of that, you're talking about the people's side of PeopleSoft? The people's side of PeopleSoft is very, very different than the implementation piece. So the implementation piece is what's going to be happening in this next year in phase one and phase two. The, the gap analysis would have said, this is where, these are the, the holes where that Peralta has in its system. And these are the pieces that we have to fix to get this operation moving. If they're going to pull information from reports that were done previously and not come back to us with any change orders, if there is something that they should have found in their initial evaluation and proposal of costs, then I feel more comfortable about that. But in terms of the people processes, that's not gonna be such a challenge. that's not going to be such a challenge because this is, this is, we're being upgraded to what people are already doing. So our students will have mobile access. Our stu-, there, there will be more functionality and other areas. So I, I just wanted to put those things out there as things that I'm more comfortable with. I just, I've heard more on the financial piece that makes me feel a little bit more at ease and knowing where that, when you take that cost and you, and you take it across the five years, that makes more sense. I think what we want most of all is assurances that there is someone knowledgeable who is making sure that Oracle is giving us what we ask for. And I also still would like to hear a report from, from our chancellor's office that I want to see that Oracle's contract on the financial systems, which is still not totally functional, that where are they taking accountability on that? That was one point three that I understand went up to three million dollars that we paid them. And in the meantime, this goes back to Jason Cole, but it was specifically for a module, so it doesn't matter anything, other things are going on. Is that module completely operational? And if there are problems, that needs to be fixed. And we need to make sure that no matter how much we have a change of guard, that, that, that no company gets paid and then there's no continuity of services monitoring it for us from finance to IT. So we don't know if we actually signed off on it or if we got anything. And something that was kind of bothering me about Oracle, when I talked to them, they didn't realize that we had a contract with them under, it was called Peralta one. And I understand the guys that are speaking to us, those are salespeople. That is not the same people as those who are going to be doing the implementation. But I would expect that if you're coming to me and you've already had a contract, that you would want to check yourself and make sure that we didn't screw up on it or get that resolved. So I think that's a piece that I would like to have reassurances that that is done. So that, I'm hoping that that helps to clarify some things about what I'm thinking and what I'm seeing. Because I know I've been very, very firm about, it's not against the implementation at all. It is, it is against the district being taken for a ride, but also the district having the, like, we don't have to, if we don't have to have a CIO, then we definitely have to have a technical architect. We haven't had one of those in some time. And, and when we did that PeopleSoft implementation before, we had a CIO and a CTO. But the CTO had no PeopleSoft experience. We can't have that ever again. Jason Cole had no CTO, had no PeopleSoft experience. We can't have that because then they are only giving back to us what the consultants are telling them. We have to have our own ears and support to make sure. And that's also the person who's going to be there to assist our employees as, as challenges happen. That's going to be the person that's going to be arranging the training on the system and all that. That, to me, looks like best practices to make this successful. So I've talked enough, guys. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, trustee Handy. Chancellor, I think trustee Handy brings up some very excellent points in terms of previous contracts as recent as the one Peralta. And can you please provide us a, a status update on whether those, whether that contract was executed? And just the status, did the work get completed? Did we pay the contract fully? And how much of that information was integrated over into this, this particular project?
Yeah, absolutely. That's what I was making reference to when I said we learned some things from the previous ones. It was the one Peralta work that, where we, they actually got, made quite a bit of progress, got to some levels of testing in, in terms of student testing and faculty testing and using certain components of it. And in the end, it was Peralta Community College District that could not respond and do and keep up with the demands of the project. So, so for an example, what I learned from the staff, because I, I went back and interviewed some staff to try to get some context. And the woman who was the, kind of the main point liaison for IT with us said that, so first of all, Peralta tried to save money by not having a lot of the technical work being done by the staff in-house. And so PeopleSoft wouldn't, was not doing that. And Peralta said it would do it itself. It could, it could save money to do that. Then the staff in-house were supposed to be given a hundred percent time to be able to do that work, but they were not, which meant then that they couldn't keep up with it in order, and so Peralta just didn't have the capacity to do it. And ultimately, my understanding is that we got to a certain point and the, they, they agreed to close out the contract and they went, they issued a report. They said, you know, here's the closing, the closeout documents. And, and so the, my understanding is that the, the full contract wasn't completed, wasn't done, and that there was an agreed upon closeout process. Now, I might be oversimplifying, but that's basically what I got. When I, what I said, though, was that we, we then learned from that. So in negotiating this, the first thing we recognize is they're absolutely right. We do not have the capacity to be able to do a lot of those things. So we built into this contract that Oracle would be doing that technical work. And, and this is an organization that has done this successfully, you know, in, in many, many institutions and enterprises. So we have full confidence they'll be able to do it successfully in Peralta Community College District. The other thing is that trustee, trustee Handy's point is like, well, you know, how do we make sure that we're not taken for a ride, et cetera? You know, that might be one of the same conversations that Mike has to have back at his folks when he's trying to explain how did he agree to give us eighteen nineteen prices as we go into twenty twenty one. But one of the things that we agreed to was to make sure, one, that we're paying after the fact and we're paying based on deliverables. So things have to happen. It has to, it has to materialize, the deliverable has effect, then we pay for it. That's my understanding of the way it's set up. And that is, is pretty significant. And that was a, a way of trying to address some of the concerns that people may have about, you know, wait a minute, we've been burned before, and how do we make sure that this doesn't happen again? I hope I haven't oversimplified it.
No, no, I think that's good. But I think as a follow-up, a follow-up to that on this line is, what I'm hearing is that the one Peralta was not completed due to, due to our own internal capacity, if that's, if that's what I'm understanding. And I think.
That's part of the story that I got. I don't.
Part of the story, right. Which is, which sounds like a likely story, not too far from the truth. And, and then I think the follow-up to that is, given that we still don't have the capacity and that we are completely reliant upon outside consultants as we were back with one Peralta, I, I'm, I'm struggling with trying to figure out the, 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 right? We are in the same place we were two years ago. What makes us different today? And I think that's what you've been, that's what you've been hearing from us.
Right, good, very good question. Because two years ago, what we said is that you do have to work, we'll do have to work. This time, we're saying, don't even ask us to do that. We don't have the capacity. We need to build it into the contract. Oracle's doing that work.
Yeah. That, that really, that like hurts my heart in so many ways. But I, I, I know. I, I, I mean, I, I understand your, I understand what you're saying.
Yeah, and let, and let me frame it a, a certain way. It is, you know, we, we have gone through quite a bit at Peralta Community College District. And we know that, you know, if, if I could, I would, you know, make sure that all of the colleges and the district had all of the staff that it needed to be able to do everything they wanted to be able to do. But we, we work within the confines of public education budgets, you know? So, so it, it's, yes, it's unfortunate, but it's, that's not a comment on the, the inabilities of our staff. It's a comment on the capacity of our organization. The good news is that in negotiating, I, I have to give it to, give credit to the staff who've negotiated a very good contract to get everything that we need in this and to take care of and prevent us from having, making some of the same mistakes that have been made in the past. So we've tried to learn from that. And then also, if I don't, if you don't mind, I just want to address trustee Handy's concern about a CTO. I too want a CTO and plan to move forward with doing that, with addressing, getting that. You know, it's a personnel issue and we'll, we'll take care of the personnel issue first. But I do plan to move forward with the CTO.
Thank you, thank you for clarifying, thank you for clarifying that. Any other questions from trustee Gonzalez? When, okay.
Thank you. I want to clarify this question on the cost savings. Chancellor, from the slide you put up when I asked the question, it looked as though the cost savings came in the second year. One point two in first year as opposed to nine hundred thousand. And then in the second year, dropped down to about three hundred and fifteen thousand. And I'm adding those two figures together. And it looks as though instead of one point eight, you're one point four, one point five, and then a savings of about six hundred thousand a year moving forward. But I can't quite tell whether that's an apples to apples. And trustee Handy indicated that, no, in fact, that, that isn't quite right because there are other costs dealing with licensing and other things. And that according to her calculation, it was closer to three point five years. After that, you might then begin to realize cost savings. And I just want some clarification so that, in fact, we are all on the same page in terms of the arithmetic. And this is just a math question.
Yes. So it's, it's laid out, I'd have to take some time and go and find it in the contract. But it's laid out in the contract and it literally is the first year that we've laid out here and then years two through five. So those figures are literally laid out that way. I was listening to you all's math and assuming that what you were saying is, well, we're paying one point eight for this first year. And now because we're paying a little over nine hundred thousand dollars, that's an increase of, you know, up to a, of a couple hundred thousand dollars. So that, I mean, yeah, almost two hundred thousand dollars. So that's an increase of that for that first year. But then for the second year, it is a decrease. And the decrease is respectively, you know, five and six hundred thousand dollars in the second year. So we've laid that out in charts, in the contract. I tried to simplify it and lay it out here. So I'm not quite sure how, how you all come up with the number of years that it affects, is that it, you have this agents.
Maybe trustee, you can speak to this. But I also just want to say one other thing in terms of the, the history here. And I think there are other members of this board who will remember this. I will not mention names here because we're in a public session and so I'm not going to mention names. But I will say that after the last round of big technology investments, you know, the then chancellor provided opportunities for, much like with the, the OPEB briefing, for board members to meet with the staff. And he asked me, he asked me if I would sit down with the staff so that I could understand it. He had me sit down at his invitation with virtually the entire technology staff. And they sat and they nodded their heads and explained it. And they all went along with the then manager. After that happened, we were informed as a board that certain managers had ordered their subordinates to suppress information that would have been relevant and to suppress information that, in fact, materially, dramatically, by millions of dollars affected not only the cost, but the scope of what we'd been told was being done. So I've just, again, I want to put this into the context of the board has consistently trusted the administration and gotten burned. And that's why I think you are seeing this board be extremely cautious in this area, especially because with the exception of a couple of board members, we don't have the technical expertise and haven't really dug in. And we're really reliant on the expertise of staff. And so it needs to intuitively make sense to us, and then the math needs to add up. So thank you. And maybe through the board president, I might ask if trustee Handy might clarify her own assessments regarding the two, second year savings versus three and a half year savings? Because I didn't quite follow that. And I'd like to see if we can all be on the same page, at least as regards the arithmetic.
Sure, trustee Handy.
Okay, I'm no mathematician, I'm just doing this in my head. I'm looking at our cost per year, whether we're in this contract or not, are either somewhere between three hundred and fifty thousand to nine hundred thousand. Is that correct? Chancellor, I think you mentioned nine hundred thousand. I'm going by the figures that Jelena pulled up in the past that were those annual fees that you mentioned that just kept popping up.
They, they were averaging three hundred a year, yes.
Yeah, so, so, yeah. So when you look at six million dollars over five years, but you look at the first year, which is the implement, where my understanding, the first year, phase one and phase two are implementation costs, which are higher. The, the remaining years are maintenance cost. And, and technical assistance, is that correct, chancellor?
The, the remaining years that are at the three hundred, approximately three hundred, that is the operational cost, that's, that's everything. That is not, there are not additional licensing and that kind of stuff.
Right, exactly. So, so, so then the additional cost is apples to apples. There's no other surprise cost. We, like we said, right now, we're paying annual costs for licensing for quite a few different types.
Right, and you pay up to nine hundred thousand and that's what we average. There's a range that we put, but because we pay per piecemeal, then we're paying, we're paying on average nine hundred thousand.
So, so.
And this is fixing it.
Yeah, so I think what we're seeing, Nikki, is that they're taking what it would cost us annually for the maintenance if we did not enter into a contract with a locked, locked rate. So locked rate. So if we enter into the contract with a locked, locked rate and look at what we annually, our annual maintenance contract, that's why, where I thought if the savings is like a million plus, then that really starts to kick in, the saving starts kicking in like at, kind of at the third year because we're not extending out and paying that extra amount of money per month. So like I said, I'm not a mathematician, just in my head, that's how I was looking at it. It's not new cost. It is part of annual operating cost that rather than seeing that in a different contract or a different board item, it is actually coming into the one contract. So we will not be looking at a board item of an annual contract technology fee of between three or of all those piecemeal things. We will not be looking at that with regards to the technical support that comes from Oracle and the operation of the PeopleSoft. That's, that's where I'm seeing it.
Thank you, trustee Handy. I will turn this over to BP, Reese.
Thank you. So I, I too have been mulling over our conversations and many of the comments that have been put forth at the last meeting as well as today. And one of the things that I had stated last time, and I know that chancellor, you had just referred to this, is the technology plan. So the master plan from two thousand seventeen had, was really more facilities plan. It talked about technology as kind of modernizing and migrating to the cloud. But there really weren't specifics in that, which is, I think, one of the reasons why you recommended that we do the CBT technology plan. And the CBT technology plan for me did or outlines that it's going to be doing quite a few things, which I still think is important. And that is the user interface, all of the people portion of it that trustee Handy refers to. And I think that that's still. And I think that that's still very important because at the end of the day, at the end of the day, the before the implementation and the after the implementation, you need to know how and train people and understand what their needs are in order to be able to kind of go forward with a contract and changing a technological infrastructure. But I've been thinking very hard about the needs or the gap analysis that trustee Handy was talking about. Because that to me seems incredibly important in terms of what is the current kind of status and what are the needs of the current infrastructure. And I know that on the PowerPoint from Oracle, there is snippets of that. But, but something that is very high level and very specific is what I had thought CBT was going to be doing in their technological strategic plan. But clearly from our last meeting, they are not. And, and the reason why that seems to be so important, both the people, but even more so the infrastructural, high level technology analysis is because how do we even know that the scope of this contract is correct if we don't know what the current needs and the current assessment is on a high level? And that's the part that doesn't, that I have a, a bit of a problem with. And, and again, as I, I think about PeopleSoft and the history that you've all talked about, that I've read about, that I wasn't here for, but there have been fits and stops, fits and starts clearly. And it's been a very long process. And one of the questions that I asked in my study session to the Oracle people was how many other colleges are using it and or have used it? And I think one person said, I can't remember who, he couldn't think of any, he's, he named universities, but he couldn't think of any community colleges. And then the other person said that named two colleges, I think Los Rios was one that was using PeopleSoft. And so I've been trying to kind of, again, because this is not my bailiwick, trying to understand this from a macro level. And so what I, what I found was that there are two large districts that do use PeopleSoft. Oracle PeopleSoft, then that's San Diego Community College District and LA Community College Districts. And those are two large, large districts, right? With many, many students, more than ours. And as I look through their implementation as an example, it's, it's all out there on board docs. San Diego Community College contracted with Oracle in 2014 and then they contracted with Cyber. And then they contracted with Campus Solutions and they had problems along the way with, with the product. And now they have hired another consulting company that was able to look and dig deep and also bring them from where they were to their fits and starts and where they needed to be. And now it seems to be functioning well. And so it's the implement, it's, it's not, it's not that technology is not an antidote because it is for sure. You've laid that out in terms of it enables people, bringing people together with processes for student access, for efficiency, for productivity. We've got that. We know that. It's so incredibly important. The crossroads is when we, when there's so much money spent on technology because it's seen as the cure all and the antidote. And there isn't thoroughness and completeness in both the scope and the implementation. And these districts thought that it was the antidote too, but they were impast during the phases. And so for me, it's kind of two points. One, I don't know how we could look at a contract and think that it is all encompassing when there hasn't been a, an assessment data evidence that shows both the people part and the infrastructure part. Because then how do we know whether this contract meets those needs or not? Number one. And number two, it might also be helpful to us to look at two districts that and kind of where they've gone the process and how they got it to the point of success after a long and arduous and expensive process and what worked for them. What was their kind of final solution? Because we're in that same boat. As I was reading their documents, it was clear that their fits and starts looked just like what the history of PCCD has been, at least in terms of technology. And so I, I still feel the same in terms of how do we approve this without a technology plan? But if CBT is only doing one portion of that, and I thought that it was recommended because it was doing a much more delineated strategic plan that actually talked about a technological assessment. But I would say if CBT is only doing that, then it seems to me that it would make sense to actually have an assessment of the technical infrastructural components. That's, that's where I stand.
Let me comment on a couple of things that, let me respond to a couple of things.
Yes, yes.
One, with regard to an assessment, I beg to differ as to whether an assessment, a thorough assessment has been done. Deloitte did an assessment in 2017 and gave it to the board. And so a full assessment was done. I also beg to differ as to whether there's been planning because of the different plans that we have. And, and yes, they, different plans have to be updated, but they've been consistent in telling you what we need. You're right in that there are a couple of large districts that are using PeopleSoft. LA CCD that has nine colleges is using PeopleSoft and they are using it without issue. San Diego City College is using PeopleSoft, but the San Diego District is using PeopleSoft. But because they had a lot of customization, then yes, they are struggling with some of the things that they did around decisions that they made in order to customize their processes. And then finally, what I want to say is with regard to the assessment, while you have the Deloitte assessment that has told you some basic things, while you have consistent plan after plan after plan that includes the need to, to modernize and to migrate, including the, the facilities master plan, which is a basic one, but more detailed things that started as, as early as 2012. Built into this contract also is that Oracle will do a full needs assessment in the, per the business area in the first 12 weeks of the contract. So we feel like we have hit it at every mark.
Good to know. What, my, my two questions, one is a comment and the other one is a question. Right. With LA CCD, they also did have fits and starts. And they actually in 2018 hired with somebody because they had gotten to the point where it was not working very well from their point of implementation. So they also had fits and starts and now it is working better. The, I guess the, the second question that I had had is why didn't we have, there's one, it seems like a little bit of a conflict of interest to actually have the same company who we've hired to do the needs assessment after we've hired them. And why didn't we do the needs assessment before rather than after?
You, you're talking about the business assessment that will be done as the first, as the first component?
Right.
That's just the responsible thing to do. Come in, I mean, we've, we've given them the assessment. We know that we need to have the upgrades. We see it in the plans. You've seen it in all of the different recommendations. And then they're coming in doing an assessment in order to set the foundation, doing the assessment in order to go forward. That seems responsible.
Okay. And again, not my bailiwick.
We asked for that.
Yeah, not my bailiwick. And so that's why I asked that question. It just, it would, you know, the people assessment portion of CBT, that's very helpful. And so it seemed compatible and not illogical to also have a needs assessment as a kind of high level. This is what your platform problems or deficits are. And then you hire somebody with a scope that would be addressing that. And then they would of course do a much more detailed needs assessment once they, once they've been hired.
Okay, trustee, trustee Handy.
You're on mute, trustee Handy.
I, I wanted to clear, I'm sorry, I'm watching. The kids are outside too. I wanted to clear up some of the things that Cindy said. This is, I'm, I'm trying to find something to give a parallel so you could see it. I have a specific car. I have a, whatever it's 2008 BMW. If I take it in for any upgrades or parts, those parts are specific to that. We have a financial component. We have a student services module. These are not just things that we're picking, pulling out of. These are specific modules that go to our system and our system being upgraded to be able to utilize those modules. So once those, the upgrade takes place, which we had to do anyway, and the modules are put in, then we will have all of the functionality in those areas. Now the actual communications with students and what we might want to add to it, that's not going to be an Oracle thing. That's, that's a different thing. Now coming back to when you say fits and starts, I always say Peralta has the system that it deserves. And that's because interference, very poor decisions about a going against what the committee and the selection committee had done. Putting people in who did not have qualific, had no PeopleSoft experience at all. And then you have a transition that happens pretty much every two years. People come and they go. And then leadership puts it on hold. Funding was not in place. So those are the, those are the things, those are kind of operational things that cause the fits and starts. If we had the money and we've had continuity of, of leadership in that department, this stuff would have been done. This, the, the modernization for the business practices, we needed it. We didn't have the money. And then we were so out of date with our upgrade that even if we got it, it wouldn't have mattered because the upgrade has to come first. So hopefully that explains it. But when I hear about other districts, having been here, I was hired, you guys. I was recruited and hired because of Temple and Tom and his relationship with Campus Works and the contract, the convoluted contract that we had with Campus Works. And that's where we spent a lot of money and didn't get the deliverables. And it's been fits and starts ever since then. I know that having these questions answered and having the timelines and the deliverables and somebody responsible, responsible for monitoring this, even if that person changed, if there was a set practice, even if we put someone else in there, we would know where we are and where, where we're going from there. But I also know even like with our construction and things like that, when you go in midway and you ask to change things, it creates a, what do you call it anyway? Like rolling down the hill. And so we can't compare ourselves to any other colleges because it's apples and oranges. No one, and I believe me when I tell you, no one had a system as antiquated as ours. When you look at the cost of operating PeopleSoft, what they never really wanted to add it in, but you could do the math, was the cost of the parallel cobalt system and that whole staff that we had to have, who were the only ones who knew how to, to make those systems operate. And so until everything was transferred into the main system, we actually had two systems going. So we really can't be compared to anyone else because of our fits and starts. It's because of limited resources. Oops, my battery's going down. I'm going to move in the house. And things out of the way that happen. So I just wanted to clarify that piece. Okay. I've got to run in and find a charger.
Thank you trustee. Trustee Weinstein.
Come on Bailey, we have to go inside. Come on.
Thank you. I, I have a few questions. Is the needs assessment the same as the gap analysis? Anybody?
Trustee Bania?
I'm here. I'm sorry. Yes, chancellor, please.
Okay. The way I'm hearing it, you typically, you know, a gap analysis looks at what you have, you know, what you're trying to get to and what's the gap in between and, you know, what, what are your solutions that you need? The needs assessment looked at the same thing. It looked at, you know, what system we have and identified that we needed to, you know, upgrade things or modernize things or improve things or add staffing or move staffing. It did the same thing. I'm not sure when people say gap analysis, whether that's what they're referring to, but I would refer them to the 2017 assessment that was done by Deloitte.
Okay. Yeah. And we will have a set person or we will have set people who are going to be able to monitor this and report back or let us know how things are going?
There's a, there's an entire infrastructure to set up and we've intentionally placed high levels of accountability on it on both the Peralta side as well as the Oracle side.
Okay. So my thought with this is that, there's two thoughts. One is there's always going to be surprises. I mean, I just think that with technology, there's always going to be surprises. And so we, we can't know what those surprises are yet. We don't know. They're going to be, I, I can guarantee you, there's going to be a surprise. So the, but what we can do is that we can make sure that we are open and transparent about those surprises and that we have people who can help us with that. And that's, you know, seems to be kind of the best that I imagine that we can do. And transparency is incredibly important. And having an update, updates, regular updates are, I think, very important. The other thing is accountability. I mean, it's built in, I think, that there is accountability. Isn't that correct? That's built into the system.
Yes, it's built in in a number of ways. And one of the ways is accountability in that it's based on, you know, our payment structure as well as the deliverables that are required. So that's, that's built in. But it's also built in in terms of the team that we put in place on each side and what, who's responsible for what and what I'm holding people accountable for.
Okay. So that's another thing that's good, you know, that we have that. I think just looking back and then looking forward, but looking back, I do think that, or in the future, I, I would love to have, maybe this is not possible, but I'd love to have somebody come in when we have a new system and say, these are the possibilities for a new system. X does this. Another one does a different type of one. Some other company does something else. We looked at all these different types and we came up with X. And we support X and we support X because of X, Y, and Z. And I will hope that next time that we have something like that because it's very hard to evaluate when you just have one system in front of you. And you basically just like, all right, it's looking good to me, but that's the only system that I'm looking at. So while I understand you've done, and I think VC Warden has done, the exploration, I assume. It's still good, I think, to share that with the trustees from the get go.
If I can just comment on that, we did not consider transitioning Peralta Community College different district to a different, different ERP system. We recognize and respected the decision that Peralta made to be a PeopleSoft district. And if in the future, that's something that we want to change, then we certainly can look into that. You will be having much different conversations about the cost and the transitioning because you know what happened when you transitioned before, when you went to, to PeopleSoft. But it certainly doesn't mean just because you're a PeopleSoft district that we have to stay a PeopleSoft district. But no, in the context of getting this system modernized and migrated, we did not consider a different system.
Okay. That's good to know because it's good that it was, that it was looked into. Let me see if there was anything last. No, I, I mean, I guess in this situation, I, I feel a little bit like I've learned as much, I'm learning a lot about technology as it's being presented to us. My hope is that we are doing the right thing and that you and everybody else is presenting what you think is the right thing. And if there are problems with that, they will come up and we will discuss it at those times. We, we, we don't, we cannot predict everything. We just, to some degree. We just, uh, to some degree, it seems like very antithetical, but to some degree, we do have to hope for the best. And that's what I'm trying to do in this whole, in this whole process. So, um, and one last thing is, which I think trustee Gonzalez UN said, I, uh, which is slightly off, but I do think that it is important to see, see things within a larger context. Um, and that when we do one thing for six million, we may not be doing another thing for something less or something more. We make that decision. In this situation, we need technology. We need our students to have technology. We need technology for the internal controls. We need a FIFIC map. I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm trying to be knowledgeable and, and hopeful. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Weinstein. Um, Chancellor, if you can indulge me in just a couple of, uh, pieces that I'd love to get, um, some clarification from you on. So, as the contract sits right now, um, on this five-year term, um, understanding the different phases and where the supplement or where the, um, licensure and all the other pieces come in at the backend, I, I, I am still struggling with, um, trying to come to terms during these economic, during this time of economic uncertainty, why we or any other district would engage in a five-year anything. Right? Five-year contract, five-year terms. Um, I, I'm, I'm really struggling with that piece. So, that's one, and I'm gonna let you respond to that. And then the second is, uh, the funding source. And I mentioned this to you, um, briefly in a email exchange. Um, that wouldn't it be why, wha- can you explain to me why? I, I am totally uncomfortable given the district's current cash flow problem, given the outlook of the entire state and the, uh, significant budget cuts and what we can anticipate in terms of, uh, the rest of this year, next year, and the following year. Um, and I am uncomfortable committing $2.4 million out of our general fund because of that economic uncertainty and what that means. Um, and I asked, wouldn't it be wiser for us to dedicate, uh, one funding source being the bond for this? And I'd love to hear your feedback on both of those issues.
Sure. Uh, the first thing is that in terms of the funding source, everything that we could, uh, put in the bond and that we identified as part of the bond, that the tax payers anticipated we would have in the bond is in the bond. That's why Phase One and Two is in the bond. The operational pieces are not, we are not allowed to use the bond for those. Those are, that's money we have to pay for the use of the system. Now, when you say, why would you feel comfortable in doing that for five years? Because even if we decided today that you were gonna not have PeopleSoft and we were gonna change to Banner, let's say, there was gonna be a new system, you still are going to be using this system for a good three to five years, even if you made that decision today. So, when I say that you're gonna be, you, we're gonna, we're gonna pay operational costs for the next five years, the choice is whether you wanna commit to paying less than the $900,000, the $300,000 and change, or whether you wanna say, I don't wanna make that commitment for five years. I'm comfortable with doing this and we'll just pay it as we go along. Then that's where you will pay the higher prices. So, you might get comfort in going with smaller amount of years. But from, for the next five years, we will be a PeopleSoft system, no matter, even if the board voted tonight. We will be a PeopleSoft system.
Yeah, no, I wanna, I wanna make sure that, that that's not my question. So, I'm not questioning who we are engaged with, um, in terms of product. My question is really about the contractual commitment
Yes.
over a long period of time. Not about the who, just about the contractual commitment during times of economic uncertainty.
Got it. Because the contractual, the, the, the contract is negotiated such that if you want 18, 19 prices and if you want to pay the lesser amount, we'll commit to five years. If you don't, we don't have to, but you will not have 18, 19 prices and you will pay the higher amount.
Okay, thank you for clar- and then the other following clarifying question for me is, um, on the budget source, you have 2.4, uh, $2,440,271 dollars coming out of the general fund. Can you tell me what, uh, budget cycle that's coming from?
Um, so each, uh, each, that $2 million, let me see what document you're looking at.
Oh, it's just the board doc.
Uh, oh, okay. So, that, that is over the general, because it's a five-year, that is over the five years? Yeah.
The 2.4 is over a five-year period?
Right. Uh, Delau, am I correct in that? That's the 2.4 operational?
Yes.
Uh, the one that goes to the general fund, yes.
Yeah, if you look at the slide where it shows the, so in year one, um, there's the approximately $1.1 million and then years two, three, four, and five, it's approximately $315,000.
And so, that totals 2.4.
Correct.
And so, and, and, and that's, that's budgeted now in the general fund. As a matter of fact, what's budgeted in the general fund right now is 900 over 900. So, that's where we get the savings.
Okay, so currently, 900,000 in the current 1920 budget.
And in the 2021 and the 2122, that's, that's what we have budgeted, uh, unless we make, unless we have a different contract.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, it looks like there's some follow-up questions. Thank you for that, uh, trustee Gonzalez.
Thank you. I actually wanna follow up on that very question. So, Chancellor, what you just said is that in the current year, we have $900,000 in our budget. Now, I, I haven't gone to the budget and okay, here's the line item, yeah, $900,000.
We're paying over 900,000.
I'm gonna trust that that number is correct so that in the current year, we have budgeted and are spending $900,000
That's correct.
On PeopleSoft.
On the operation.
Operations
Yes.
that are equivalent to what we are contracting for, for five years coming forward. Now, i- is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. And that in the plan for the coming year's budget that we haven't approved yet, the working document is $900,000 for the coming year. But the, and then, so, uh, president Banea's question was, when we look at this $1.18 million for year one, is that in the 2020, 21 year?
It'll be in the 2021 year.
Okay. And so, we would then be increasing our budgeted cost by about $200,000.
That's correct. Yeah.
All right.
And that's, there's a little bit of build cost in that, but yes.
A little bit of?
Build costs for that, for that first year. For the first year.
Okay, I'm not sure what I, if I understand what that means.
Uh, Delau, can you, uh, speak to that, please?
Sure. So, by build cost, she means the op- the operating expense in year one is higher because part of the support that they're giving is to, um, the implementation of, uh, Phase One and Phase Two. And then in year two, the operating expense doesn't include build because that's all done. So, it's just the maintenance of the system. That's why you have the dramatic drop-off. But also to the point regarding the 900,000, um, those figures aren't locked in year to year because, uh, uh, well, one, they're variable costs, so they can go up and possibly go down, but more likely to go up. And then also, you would incur whatever the, the current price is in that next fiscal year, um, which industry standard is somewhere between four to seven percent. So, if we're looking at this $900,000 cost in maintaining it for the next five years, look at a four to seven percent compound, um, compounded interest, so you're paying higher. So, that number potentially could go up and likely would go up by year three, four, and five. So, the, 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 the gap between what we're paying actually grows, um, to be more than the current amount that's roughly 600,000.
Okay. So, what would be helpful, I, to me as a decision-maker, is if, uh, I, if I had validated the figures that you're putting forward. You're saying, this is, our, our expenditures are $900,000, but I've heard a different figure discussed today and that is that the average expenditures were somewhere between three and $500,000. If, if my memory serves me, I could go back and watch the tape. But then we're talking about $900,000 for this year, but that the average costs have been three to five. Uh, am I, did I hear that wrong?
No, the average costs have not been three to five. What you may have heard is that there's a range that it could be, uh, because it's not a fixed rate and that we, what we, the actuals is what we're actually spending is up to over 900,000 a year. So, yeah, it's not, it's not average.
Chancellor, if, if you could come back after this meeting and, and show us that and it's like, yes, here's it in writing, and this year it was this amount. If you just go back five years and, and delineate those costs, I think that would, that would be comforting to us in terms of just documentation of what we're talking about because, you know, we're hearing different figures being tossed around and at what point the, the cost savings kick in. If in fact, it's demonstrably $900,000, then all-in costs in terms of apples-to-apples expenditures, then in fact, in the 21, 22 academic year or fiscal year, we would realize, I don't know, about half a million dollars of savings or something along those lo- those lines. And then that half a million dollars moving forward. That would be very helpful. I, I wanna, trustee, uh, Napoli Valeris raised a point that I think is kind of critical and that is the number of districts using PeopleSoft. And I remember, I wasn't elected, I was sitting in the audience in 2014 watching the board have this discussion about PeopleSoft. And I remember, a lot of people were saying, wait, 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 wait. We are not ready for this decision. And other people saying, no, we have to do this right now because it's immediate. And then we ran those parallel systems for, I don't know, Linda, how many years was it? Five, six, whatever? And so, you know, the rush, rush, rush that the administration was putting on the board to make this decision right away. Turned out it wasn't a rush at all. In fact, we were running these parallel systems for the next half of a decade. One of the things that strikes me is that, that every district in the state is running these systems, some kind or another. And every one of these systems is making, you know, specific modifications and tinkering. And these technology companies are making a fortune because they're customizing and writing these, you know, writing programs for every different little district. And Chancellor, it strikes me that because we have not, that this chancellor's office in Sacramento has not taken it upon themselves or the league or some other centralized coordinating body has not taken it upon themselves to say, wow, you know, as a consortium, we really should be going out and doing this the way that we're doing Canvas, for example, so that we've got some uniform systems and maybe there's some customizable elements here and there. But because we're not leveraging the power of 72 districts, we're all getting taken for a ride. And that that really should be the direction that we should be going in. Now, again, I don't know enough about technology to know whether in fact that's a possible or impossible system or approach. But it seems to me that, you know, Linda indicated we've spent, what, $50 million or something like that on this ridiculous system that still doesn't work. That, that just, that's crazy. And, and seems to me to be just a bad approach from a policy perspective that we did not, in fact, seriously, over the last 10 years, take an entirely different approach here.
Uh, thank you, trustee Gonzalez. Trustee Handy.
I just wanna give you guys some background. It was a state, I, I think it was, it's called a something foundation. They, at the time that we were looking at PeopleSoft, and that's when I came in. We were already, we had Campus Works here. And when I came in, we were looking at moving towards a PeopleSoft system. So, it's been in for at least 16 years. But, um, at that time, we looked at Banner and other systems and we decided that PeopleSoft was the way that we were, we wanted to go. Um, I think it was a state's chancellor's officer, it's a, it's a, some, it's a community college foundation. I can't think of the name of it right now. It was a long time ago. They wanted to give us our system free. At that time, it was an expandable system where other colleges, like smaller colleges, would have been able to store off of our system. So, it was moving forward. We chose what we thought was best. I was very opposed to going with Oracle at the time. We chose PeopleSoft. It was independent. I went away for two days and I got a phone call from the chancellor that Oracle had bought PeopleSoft. So, um, in terms of, when you talk on the tech side, our PeopleSoft is not a problem. Our utilization and implementation is the problem. When they put in the system, when they put in the system, that is a suc- that's a success. Our inability to operate the system or not add all the pieces that need to go to make our particular college functional, that's the people part of PeopleSoft. So, with money, with consistent, um, leadership, or let's not take, without all of the turnover, you know, when I look at turnover, every time you get a new CIO, you get a new chancellor, you've got one year, um, learning curve where there's no expectations. And the second year, um, then we're starting to get some things done or at the end of the second year, you're hoping that the relationship will be dissolved without having to go in another direction. And that's, that's kind of the nature of how things work with colleges. People come, they stay a couple of years and they move over. So, when that new chancellor, when the old chancellor left, the new chancellor was not looking at this. So, things went as they had in the previous years. What we're looking at now, it's like you're gonna go to the spa, but you're buying it all-inclusive so that we know that we're going to have these pieces that we already knew that we needed. And to move and go to another system, we would have the same challenges if we did not put in what was needed for that su- system to function, the people that were needed to make it operational, and then the checks and balances to make sure that everything went as it should on the timeline. So, I think that if we had had, uh, this conversation in the beginning and had had, shared all these ideas, we would all be a little bit more at ease with it. I had specific questions because I knew of certain practices that needed to be done because we had done them or not done them before. But in terms of pulling together the other reports and the information, I am comfortable because that talks about the people's side of it. If there comes to be another gap that Oracle is not seeing between what they think it is now and when we start, but if Oracle is locking them, committing them to that, then it doesn't matter because they are committing to bringing us forward, um, at this cost. And it would actually be their loss for not having done it earlier if there are missing components, once they have committed to a contract with us. So, that's a little bit different way of looking at it for me. If we commit to this system, it looks like for the first year, for these implementations, it's going to change a lot for our students and especially, um, in time of COVID and we're not knowing what's going to happen and how much, we're gonna be relying more on technology than we've ever done before. And so, this is the time for us to move it forward if we hadn't done it before because we may have to rely on it a lot more. I'm also hearing. Uh-huh, I'm sorry.
I said, that's right, we all agree with you.
Yeah. And, and then the other part is, I gave you, I gave you a, a piece I've shared with, um, Jelena, some of the advantages of us moving to the cloud. This first part is already moving to the cloud. But these other things about our, what our equipment and what we have there, if we had, again, a technical architect, that could also lead us to that next phase that we talked about where, um, reducing and eliminating owned infrastructure costs, maintenance, power, the real estate savings, um, eliminating the single point of failure. Oracle did a eliminating the single point of failure, Oracle did address that, and that also is a benefit for being to the cloud. We reduce our IT footprint by eliminating equipment space is another thing that would happen as we move out. It allows us to keep current staff to manage the virtual environment. More flexible technology environment that allows you to scale up and out as needed and not pay for more capacity than you need. And the last part was greater flexibility since you can virtualize different parts of your infrastructure to different partners, um, regarding email, collaboration, MS, whatever. This was a gift to us that we did not have to pay a hundred thousand dollars for. Someone who cares about Peralta who watches us and sends the message of saying, what you're doing and moving towards the cloud in the future, these are ways that you can save money if this is what you're going to do. So for us to now look at the next five years, also, how are we gonna start moving these things and getting with the curve? So what I'm hearing today is we're gonna be sending the same amount, whether we have a contract or not. If we have a contract, we will be having a cost savings and we will be locked in. The thing that I really want to hear though, the only thing that makes this work for me is if there is a technical architect or a CIO, but I think we need more of the technical architect than we need the CIO. The management of employees, that's a different piece, that's a different talent, but, and that person must, must have people's soft experience.
Thank you, thank you, trustee Handy.
Bill is laughing, but you know.
Thank you, trustee Handy, yes. Yes, yes, yes. Um, so, uh, it looks like we have had a full conversation, um, and I am, you know what, you know what we didn't do? Y'all are so funny. I can't believe you let me get away with that. Hey, we never even moved the item for discussion, and if you all dare, you dare.
So moved. I, I moved the motion and strongly recommend that we go along with the uh very detailed and articulate um justification of our chancellor.
Uh, so we have a, we have, we have a motion, and did I hear trustee Handy's second? And uh, being that we had a fruitful discussion, um, we will go ahead and take roll call. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Withrow?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Handy?
This time, yes.
Thank you. Trustee Gonzalez Ewan?
Please come back to me.
Okay. Trustee Weinstein?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, trustee Napolea Valeris?
Can you hear me now?
I can hear you now.
Sorry. Um, yes, this was a robust conversation. Thank you very much for that. For me, I, a strategic plan that collects data and gathers end-user information at all tiers and a high-level assessment, a technical assessment is, are still needed for me to substantiate a vote, so I am abstaining.
Thank you. And um, trustee Bonilla?
Yes.
Thank you. And we'll go back to trustee Gonzalez Ewan.
Um, I, I very much share um trustee Reese's concerns here. Um, and I, I feel as though the board is constantly put in this position where, you know, guns up against our head, do this or else, do this now, because if we don't, then the sky will fall. I, I can't tell you how many times I've, I've heard that. If the board gets that on, on the security contract in June, I just like, no, 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 we've, we've.
We know in advance.
And um, uh, I, I'm gonna support the administration on, on this. Um, but I really do want to see the line item figures back-validated demonstrating, in fact, this nine hundred thousand dollars, because really, the, the, the core of this argument, and this is a long way of casting a yes vote, but the core of this argument is, look, we need these modules. The ongoing costs are gonna be nine hundred thousand dollars and then more. Uh, we cannot negotiate a better deal. This is absolutely slam dunk, the best deal we've been able to negotiate. And these numbers are validated by back budgets. Uh, I'll vote yes, but I really am expecting, now, it's just me personally, I don't direct the administration, but I think a good faith demonstration of those figures moving, you know, looking backwards is critical because that is the essence of the argument that the administration is making here. And I'm gonna go along with it, both because of the exigencies of this moment, which I'm resentful of, frankly. Um, and, and, you know, it's like the planning, just notwithstanding the, anyway, I'll shut up. Yes.
Thank you. Motion carries.
Oh, fantastic. Okay, um, I'm not gonna lie to you. I did not wanna spend my last two hours of Friday on this phone. But I am gonna wish you all a very happy rest of the evening and a wonderful Friday. Thank you all so much. This meeting is adjourned.
I'm getting on my bicycle, I'm gonna go ride with the kids, my neighborhood kids outs- outside. Get some exercise and just put this Friday to rest, you guys.
Thank you, thank you. Happy Friday, everyone.